Nineteen dash oh sixteen is a request to receive and file a presentation regarding G P E D C city commitment and two thousand nineteen outlook.
We have a familiar face with us from a little over a year ago, our current executive director for the Greater Peoria E D C, Mr. Setti. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be back on the floor and in the horseshoe. I never do know how best to address everyone, so I grabbed the handheld mic so I could keep turning around. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I actually did speak a couple of weeks ago briefly about the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, and so I was invited back to give a fuller presentation, working with Assistant City Manager Rattler, on all of the partnership agreements that she's been working out over the next couple of council meetings. I think you'll be hearing a number of different presentations from some of the folks that, I think, consider ourselves an extension of the work that the city does, and very much so, I consider the work that the Economic Development Council does as an extension of your own economic development department. This is our mission statement, and I want to point out that when we say that the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, in collaboration with local partners, we don't do this work on our own, we do it in collaboration with our local partners, which is your city staff, and you as individual council members even, and the mayor, drive economic growth in Greater Peoria through targeted business and talent development and attraction. We cover a large territory. We cover five counties, Peoria, Woodford, Tasewell Counties, which are the ones that everybody can quite easily remember, but then also Mason and Logan Counties, so all the way to Havana and to Lincoln and those areas. We are what's called an Economic Development District, which is a designation of the Economic Development Administration of the Department of Commerce, which means that we help manage a strategic plan for this region, which I'll get to in a moment. I thought, even though I want to talk about what the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council does, I thought I would take this opportunity to give you a little snapshot into how your local economy is performing. And so, this is a chart of the two figures that I pay the closest attention to when it comes to the economy, which is labor force and the total number of people employed. I don't look at the unemployment rate, because the unemployment rate is a bit of a false, it can be kind of a false narrative. The unemployment rate is the total number of unemployed people divided into the total number of people that are in your workforce, but you can get to a pretty low unemployment rate by having everybody leave. And so, it's not a very good, you can, that's the way, one of the ways you can see a reduction in your unemployment rate. A better measure is to see how your labor force is doing, and is it increasing or is it decreasing? And this graph shows from January two thousand and seventeen to November of two thousand and eighteen, what's been happening, and the latest numbers available are the November numbers at a county and a city level. The December numbers will come out, they come out about three weeks later, so the December numbers will come out in late January, and then we continually update this. This is just for the city of Peoria, this isn't for the entire region, and so, your labor force has grown by nine hundred and twenty-one people. Labor force is kind of an interesting, it's not everybody that could work, but it's everybody who's looking to work, and so, you're in the labor force if you're engaged in the workforce. That is the, whether you are working or looking for work, so it does not include everybody who could or should be working. We don't have county level, or we haven't been able to find a good source for county level, what we would call the labor participation rate, which is the total, which is the percentage of people that could possibly be working or should be working. But still, the fact that you have a growth in your labor force is usually a sign of some optimism in your local economy, because people may be coming off the bench and back into the workforce. More important is the bottom line, the green line, which shows that over that same time period, you have twenty-one hundred more, and I made sure that the math, because I always hate when a number comes out to be so even like that, because it looks like you're estimating, and it actually, I did go back and actually subtract the numbers from I D E S to make sure I did that right. It is twenty-one hundred more employed Peorians. I do want to note, that doesn't necessarily mean they're working in Peoria, it means that they live in Peoria and they are considered employed, so this is, this could very well be a regional statistic. The progress that's being made in the city of Peoria is reflective of the general trends we've seen in the region over the last, over the last twenty-three months. So, this is really what we're aiming at, at the Economic Development Council, is to get these numbers to keep going up. So, we, how do we do this? Well, we do three things, in three buckets. One, we try to strengthen communities, and we do this through this comprehensive economic development strategy, which I'll talk about briefly. We also do rural economic development, which is not something that impacts the city of Peoria and the council directly, but it is important for the overall region, because our rural economy is an important feeder even into your own local economy. So, we do provide some services out to the communities that don't have professional staff in the economic development area, but then we also grow a business, grow businesses through assistance, attraction, and our work with startups, and then we try to grow talent, both develop the talent that we have here, but then also try to attract talent from outside of the region. I mentioned the SEDs, and if some of you remember, if you remember back to two thousand and twelve, and the focused forward Central Illinois efforts that went on, the dozens and dozens of meetings that had over, well over a thousand people participate in those, in those meetings and give input, that all ended up in a plan called a comprehensive economic development strategy, which actually was submitted to the E D A and spans from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. So, guess what that means? At the end of this year, we'll be rewriting it again. We don't have to go through the same format every time, but we do have to have a collective strategy of how we're going to move this region forward, because it's not the city of Peoria on an island, it's the city of Peoria within a larger region, where we have people who live in Peoria that work in East Peoria and Morton, people in Washington and Germantown Hills and Pekin that work in Peoria, so this all has to work together, so we have to think of ourselves as a region. So, the very first objective within, within the SEDs document is to act regional, to understand that we're all in this together. The second is expanding economic performance, improving human capital, that is the workforce side of things, and then value and enhance our quality of life. What's important about the comprehensive economic development strategy is that it's not merely the work plan of G P E D C, rather, it's the work plan for the region. So, there are other organizations that are tasked with some of the work that's done here, so enhancing our quality of life very much, there's a portion in there for the health department, there's a portion in there for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, it is not just the plan of my organization, we have a lot to do with the things that are in there, but it's actually the plan of the community to move forward. So, I wanted to briefly go over some of the, of the areas that we work in, and some of our two thousand and eighteen highlights of what we did and what we plan on doing in two thousand and nineteen. So, business attraction is the kind of what we would call the blocking and tackling of economic development. Eighty to ninety percent of your jobs in your community are going to come from the companies that are already here, and we need to work to support those companies and see how we can help them grow, help them overcome obstacles, and so, we attempt to meet with, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead, you know what, I'm going to just, I'm going to skip ahead and I'll come back, since I've already halfway into this. One of the ways we do that is going out and meeting with those businesses, and we, I try to meet with a hundred businesses a year in the region. So, this past year, we met at least twenty-eight, I actually think that may be a little bit of an old slide, where we reach out to these, these organizations and these companies to try to understand what they're going through, and then see if there are ways that we can help them, connect them with resources, put them in touch with the, with the training opportunities and other resources that are in the community. We also manage the enterprise zone for Peoria County, which has a, I believe you actually tonight, on one of your items on the consent agenda was to alter the boundaries of the enterprise zone, so that now falls on my organization to do all of the work, to put that boundary amendment together and submit it to the state. In two thousand and nineteen, we'll be processing another, at least one more enterprise zone change. We manage a foreign trade zone, which is a federal designation that allows for some relief from tariffs, and then also, we're really going to be starting to focus on the defense industry. We were the recipient of a Department of Defense grant that will allow us to work with our companies in the region, in the city and in the region, to understand how they might be able to get more contracts with defense industry partners, so that we can help diversify our economy here. Now, I'm going to move back to business attraction, and my apologies for that. Business attraction is probably the thing that people are, would most associate with what we try to do, and it's the thing that's really the hardest to do, and it's, because it really does, this is where the regionalism really comes in, in trying to market this entire region to the outside world. We do this in a number of ways, site selector requests, we get a number of them each year, where we're putting in opportunities for the, for property within the city, for corporations, usually manufacturers, but other types of corporations, that are seeking an opportunity to grow or relocate. So, that's a list of a few of the, of the projects. We coordinate with your staff here, working closely with them on identifying what those properties might be, what incentives might be available, and putting those applications together, but we, we do all of the legwork of putting those applications and chasing them down. We also attend trade shows, we went to four trade shows this year, but also, in addition to those trade shows, work to build relationships with site selectors who are consultants, who are doing, they're commercial real estate agents that are in this business of working with companies, and then also with foreign consulates. So, Mayor Artis, for example, has a really good relationship with General Counsel Ito of the Nation of Japan, and so, those are the types of, those consulates are a great entry point into understanding where those businesses are. So, we've made a relationship with the Japanese External Trade Organization, the U.S. Vietnam Foundation, the Italian Trade Agency, company, organizations like that that are representing foreign firms that are interested in American presence. In two thousand and nineteen, we're going to have an entirely new state organization or leadership at the State Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. So, one of the things that we will do is try to understand who those people are, what their relationship, what their interests are, so that, so that our region is well represented in Springfield. We're also going to be doing some targeted work in St. Louis and Dallas with their site selectors. We've done a lot of work trying to work with site selectors in Chicago. Quite frankly, the Chicago site selectors are so busy with stuff going on in Chicago that they often don't have time to think about anywhere outside of Chicago, even outside of the city of Chicago itself, so we're branching out a little bit. This past year, we did some outreach to folks in Charlotte, places where we have a direct, a direct flight, so Dallas, Atlanta, but then also St. Louis because of its proximity. And then I will, I'm going to talk about innovation in a second, but I, but I want to think a little bit, or explain to you a little bit about innovation as attraction, that we have some really amazing innovative assets in this community. We're going to be building a new one that I'll talk about here in a moment, but we want to use that to set the stage for trying to attract companies here, because they are interested in innovation, because I think that's something that we have a real strength in. Innovation and entrepreneurship, a couple of the things that we do in that space, we manage a coworking space, that I'm not sure how many people in the, on the council know about it, but it's in the warehouse district. This is a small coworking space, we actually are just growing physically a little bit. We have sixteen different individuals that have signed up, so these are sixteen businesses that are running out of the warehouse district, you know, in the space that's kind of right next to Sugar. We sponsored a visit by a group called the Results Junkies, which was a group of entrepreneurs that came, that travel across the United States and, and visit with entrepreneurial communities. That actually resulted in one of the entrepreneurs in that group making a significant investment in one of the local startups here in Peoria. In two thousand and nineteen, of all of the things that are up here on this list, the one I want to talk about is the Peoria Innovation Hub, which some of you might have heard about. Back in, in late December, we announced this, this is a partnership between the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, O S F Healthcare, and Illinois Central College to attract, to, we've been able to identify a funding source from the University of Illinois that will allow us to transform I C C's Thomas Building into an innovation hub that will have all of the things that you would need to equip, inspire, and support entrepreneurs. So, much, I could go on and on about that. It's a very exciting thing, it'll be very unique to Peoria, and hopefully allow us to not only develop our own entrepreneurs with providing solutions to business problems, but also be that attraction element of getting entrepreneurs from other communities to come here and think about how, how they can make their business work here. And then finally, workforce development, which is the new currency of economic development. Years and years ago, it was all about incentives. How much could you give more than the next community could give? I'm not going to lie to you and say that incentives aren't still important, but companies are sophisticated enough to understand that they need to make their company work in your community, and the thing that they need more than anything else is a qualified workforce. And so, G P E D C recognizing that, just try to work on that. On your desks I placed earlier, or Stacy placed earlier, our Career Spark brochure from this year, Career Spark is an opportunity for forty-two hundred young people this year, over a thousand of them from city of Peoria schools, that attended a career exploration fair at the Civic Center. Very important, because the earlier you start young people understanding what their careers are, what their career opportunities are going to be, the greater the chance that they start understanding that at the high school level and start taking classes. So, what we do on workforce development is super important, both training the young, the people that we have here for the jobs that are here, but are also attracting people from outside. That's why we do things like intern mixers and newcomer mixers. In two thousand and nineteen, we are going to do another Career Spark, this time we went, we did thirty-four hundred students the first year, we did forty-two hundred students the second year, we're hoping for five thousand students this year. Some targeted talent attraction around the areas that we know we have the greatest need in healthcare and manufacturing, and then we have this Live G P booklet, which is really a tool that we give to H R recruiters and realtors and, and other folks like that to help them attract people to their community. So, we do a lot of work with the, with the human resources groups to help attract people to their community. And then finally, just back to the idea of regional collaboration equals success, we do work in regional economic development, because collectively, it's easier to do things than it is individually, and there are things that are beyond just the importance, or that are, are greater than just what the city of Peoria needs, that collectively, we can do a lot easier. So, Opportunity Zones is an, is an, is an amazing new tool that was created by the federal government. There are Opportunity Zones in Peoria, Pekin, Lincoln, and Havana, so how do we have a collective strategy to drive innovation or investment to those? The Shop Local three sixty-five was a collaborative effort between a variety of chambers of commerce, including the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce, and the city of Peoria and Peoria County and others, to really try to drive that message home, and you've seen those on billboards, you've seen it on social media. I previously referenced the SEDs that will need to be redesigned this year and rewritten, and we'll need everybody's participation in that. And then finally, a data, I would encourage you to, if you want to go to our data hub website, a lot of the data about the good and the bad about our region is there for, for people to help make decisions. So, I will leave it at that, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy. Thank you very much for the opportunity to make a presentation to you. We very much appreciate the investment that the city of Peoria makes in our organization. Mayor Artis sits on our board, and I certainly appreciate his leadership in our organization as well, so if there's, I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Councilmember Grayb.
Welcome back, Chris. It doesn't quite seem like you've been gone, because you're still working for the city of Peoria, but one of the important aspects that I see here for our region and our ability to grow and really prosper is concentrating more on the development of our transportation links. We can go back and talk about the Kerner Curve and regurgitate the ancient history, but for a number of years, there was a drive on the part of some of our federal lawmakers to have a direct four-lane highway out of Peoria to Chicago. Looks like there was a lot of resistance as it relates to that particular proposal, and the desire to have that direct link, and we heard that, oh, it's only fifteen or twenty minutes difference if we had that versus just going down to Bloomington, for example, and then making our way up northeast. However, right along that corridor, there are a lot of things that can happen if we would actually have a direct route to Chicago, there's a lot of economic development that would happen. Also, a huge problem, I think, for us, as I remember as a young kid, we used to be able to get the train not too far from where we are right now, and then later on, it was Chila Coffee. Now, we got to go all the way to Bloomington. This is, this is a problem. I mean, our transportation links, I believe, are critical for the success of our city and indeed our region. Do you have any update you can give us? And I think we're talking basically here, probably our federal lawmakers.
So, thanks for the question. I would agree that infrastructure is the next to workforce, or maybe equally as important as workforce, is having that proper infrastructure. Mayor Artis and I did meet with the Executive Director of the High Speed Rail Coalition, that was a few months ago, to try to, as you understand, might understand, passenger rail connections are very expensive and difficult. I know the mayor has been an advocate of it in the past, as has this council, and we would continue to join in those efforts. I will be honest, that we haven't done a lot of work with, with the highway to Chicago issue, it's just not come up on our, my radar screen in the last twelve months, but, but the more connections we have to, to the rest of the state and the rest of the Midwest, the better. I will say that Peoria and this region is really blessed with, although you did, were right to point out a couple of the places where things could improve, we're one of the only places in the country that has the really unique combination of rail, river, road, and air, and we have all of those things, and that, that is very helpful, and when we're trying to make our case for why come to Peoria, you know, access to markets is a cost that, that manufacturers and other companies incur. So, if we can provide the options of, of, of a really great, we have five Class One railroads that run through this, through this region, and the Illinois River, which, you know, everybody has a railroad, most counties or most cities will have a railroad and, and access to interstates. The quality of our airport is unparalleled for a city our size, and the, the asset of the Illinois River, so we just need to continue to accentuate those, but then work with state and federal legislators on, on those issues that you mentioned.
Yeah, and I hope we will continue to work on that, and I appreciate your, because we don't want to just talk about the glass being half-empty, but our Greater Peoria, General Wayne A Downing International Airport is wonderful, absolutely fantastic, and I'm hearing that there are some folks up north who miss our Greater Peoria, Wayne A Downing International Airport, and the ease of moving around, and so, that, that is a huge plus, but those transportation links are going to be so critical, and I think that we should continue to work hard on that. Direct four-lane highway to Chicago, I continue to feel that way, came up my first year on the council under Mayor Malouf, continued, I know Rayla Hood worked very hard on that, and I think the transportation, the rail link is extremely important. We shouldn't have to go to Bloomington to hop on a train to go somewhere, it just shouldn't be that way if we're going to really hit our stride here in Peoria. Thanks again for all the work you do. In a way, I'm kind of envious that you're not with us anymore, because he's one of the few people I'd be sending an email to at one o'clock in the morning, and gosh, I'd get an answer within about ten seconds, and I had finally suggested to Patrick Urich that maybe he would say that you go to bed a little bit earlier, but anyway, we miss your zealous work, tremendous amount of work ethic that you had, and I know you're going to serve us very well in the capacity you're in.
Thank you, sir.
May Councilmember Akison next.
Thank you, Chris. Great presentation, and you're always so positive. You really amplify the glasses full rather than empty, and I appreciate that. The slide that you have for business assistants, you have, you said you thought perhaps it was an old list, or maybe there's an updated list. I noticed that there's no medical businesses listed, and I was wondering if that would be a focus for two thousand and nineteen, and then in addition, you said that when you do the business visits, you ask, what more can we do, and what are you looking for, and I, I'm interested in the feedback. What kind of feedback do you get? Are there any common threads of suggestions or requests that you could share with the council?
Sure, so, I said it was old only because I thought I saw another list that Caesar had asked our business develop, our business attraction assistance person Sally for, and I thought I saw thirty-two, but I'd already submitted this, you know, yeah, so Unity and O S F, U E comps up there. I will say, so, the quality of, just to answer your first question, our goal is to meet with a hundred, what we would call intra-regional or interstate businesses a year. We're really tasked with head of household jobs and those, those, that, what we call the primary economy. Healthcare kind of sits on the border, and when I say the primary economy, it's, it's classically defined as the companies and the businesses in your community where the majority of the goods and services they provide are sold outside of the community, so the Kamatsus, the Caterpillars, the Keystone's, whereas the secondary economy is, are those businesses where the majority is, is provided to the people within the region, and healthcare has generally been that, right? Because as the, as the, as the primary economy takes off, the retail sector, the healthcare sector, the education sector, all kind of, you know, fill in. Healthcare has kind of become a different beast here in, in Central Illinois and in, and in Peoria in particular, because of the strength of, of the medical sector, so we've moved beyond just kind of the retail provision of healthcare services to having innovative services and specialty care. So, it isn't our plan necessarily to meet with more medical companies, like individual doctor's offices, we would leave, you know, practices like that, you know, to, to the local staff, but maybe, maybe organizations like Illinois Cancer Care and, and some of those larger organizations that have a footprint that, that might be located here but have a footprint outside. Regarding your second question, the number one issue that comes up when we talk to companies is workforce, is the ability to attract people to come to their, you know, to their companies. By far, if I were to look at the reports that Sally does on, and Deborah has, Assistant City Manager Rattler has been on a few of them, and would likely echo that response, that it's, it's having that quality workforce, that dependable workforce is the number one issue, you know, that people bring up. Now, occasionally, if, you know, so, I'll, I'll give you a great example of a solution. When we met with A T S years ago, one of the things they said was how terrible North University Street was from Pioneer Parkway to Town Line Road. That, that whole project that we were able to, that the E D C and the, and the city of Peoria were able to work on to get a two million dollar E D A grant and two million dollar I dot grant to improve that road, was emanated from a set of business visits in Pioneer Park. So, sometimes you do get some localized issues about, you know, transportation or infrastructure, but workforce is, is, at least over the last few years, has been the number one issue.
Thank you, and one more follow-up. So, is there some sort of written document that lists out the workforce, the gap between the jobs that are, and you and I have talked about this, the gaps between what businesses are looking for and what we have to offer, so that there could be more emphasis on strategizing how you're going to fill that gap?
Sure, we, this would have been two years ago, the G P E D C put together what was called the Talent Forecast, which looked at what jobs are going to be in demand in the, in the very near future, both from growth of jobs, but really from the replacement of jobs. You know, as the workforce gets older, in certain, in certain industries in particular, like nursing, I read a statistic once that by two thousand and twenty, a million nurses are going to retire in this, in this country, and that, you know, what is the impact on healthcare when that happens? So, the Talent Forecast looked at that, I can certainly get you a copy of that. We've been looking to update that with some additional information based on an organization called M Z that puts this information together, and it's actually available on the, on the, on the website, on the, on our data hub, I can send you a link to that. But I think that there's really two answers to the question, there's both the critical skill gap between what companies need in terms of those, you know, you have to be a welder, you have to be a nurse, and those are the things that we're working with, with I C C and the school districts to try to create those career pathways, but then the other half of that is the, is what I would, would be generally called the soft skills of, of, of maintaining a job, being able to show up to, to work on time, being able to pass a drug test, have a driver's license, those things that aren't critical skill requirements, but they are skill requirements, some of that I would consider even resiliency issues, the ability for some folks to have backup plans or have a means of transportation to their job, and then a reliable means of transportation so that, because a lot of these jobs are hourly jobs, and if you don't show up, you don't get paid, and very well, you could get fired. So, I think there's a, there's, there's kind of two issues at play that we're working with. We are not a social service provider, we try to work with those social, social service providers and other institutions to help address those gaps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Chris. Good to see you again, and I really appreciate, as my colleague said, you being always so positive. I have about 50 questions for you, but I don't want to be here until midnight. None of us want to be here until midnight tonight. So I'm, I'm going to ask you one question, kind of on the negative side, but I have to ask. State Illinois leads this country five years in a row with mass exit people, five years in a row. I'd like to know what you think is going to be your biggest obstacle in 2019?
Well, you know, I, I think, you know, and I will remain positive that every, you know, I've lived in California, I've lived in Indiana, I've lived in Colorado, and I've lived in Illinois. Every place has things that, that people wish were different. But every place also has things that people are, should be excited about and proud of. I've lived now in Peoria for 15 years, and I'm proud to live here, and I'm not ashamed to say that to people who I meet who say, you moved here from, because I moved here from Denver and I'm actually from Los Angeles. And people will look at me as, as if I was crazy to move here. And, and what I tell them is, this is a great place to live. My friend Jeff Griffin out there is, will say, he's tired of people who live here telling him it was crazy for him to move here. So I think what we have to do when it comes to that is understand that we live in a great place, and we need to be able to, you know, to, to, to express that to other people, that this place is, is worth valuing and worth being a part of. The state of Illinois has its struggles, and, and there's no doubt that at the state level, we have seen decisions that have been made or not made, in the case of, of some budget impasses, that have had a negative impact on our image as a state. I think that can be rebuilt. When, when we're out talking to people, whether it's a company or individuals, we do accentuate the positive, because that is, that is my job. I am, I am the region's salesperson, right? So I, my job is to, is to accentuate those positives and let people know that, that despite some of the issues that our state has, there are, and our region has, there are also great things about it. And I can point to any number of other states in the, in the country that have, they may be a different set of problems, but, but there are people there that are also unhappy. So I think, I think always one of the biggest challenges in going into 2019 is battling image, not so much battling the reality, you know, because if, if tax, if high taxation is a problem for a company, you know, I always say, every dollar for a company is a dollar. Whether it's a dollar they spend on tax, you know, on taxation or a dollar they spend on electricity, we have some of the lowest electricity costs in the nation in southern Illinois, in the Ameren, in the Ameren Territory. So we just need to be able to, to overcome those, what is often perceived as a problem with real facts, and that's really what we're trying to do.
Chris, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Setti, thank you for being here. I don't miss you because I talk to you all the time, so. On your slide that shows we do three things, grow business and grow talent, my question, and this is a question that really is a holdover from your predecessor, this question and then the one I'll ask after this, is in those particular areas, grow business and grow talent, what are we doing, what is GPEDC doing to focus on the minority communities, specifically African-American community? And I'm particularly interested in the business assistance and business attraction areas.
So for minority communities, and I would just say for, not necessarily the minority community, but the impoverished community in, in Peoria and in the region, you know, the, I think the strongest work we do is, is around workforce development. We have a very strong relationship with Peoria Public Schools in trying to develop, helping them develop their curriculum and, and develop opportunities for their students to access the jobs that are available. So working on our, our internship program, where we helped Peoria Public Schools and others to develop internship opportunities for high school youth so that they can be, so that they can understand, get that early job opportunities and those early job experiences. So things like the, like Career Spark, if I were to show you a Career Spark video, which you can find on our website, you would see a variety of, of kids who are, are taking part in that. And so I think that's at, on that workforce side is, is the most crucial. On the business assistance side, we're willing to help any organization. Our job, again, is to help those, land those head of household jobs. So we tend to work with the, the larger companies in our community. We don't, for, we don't tend to work on, on retail operations. That's what the City of Peoria's Economic Development Staff is, is for smaller, you know, entrepreneurial opportunities. But, but we would be more than happy to work with, with companies. I, I think we would love to have maybe an attraction strategy around bringing minority-owned businesses to this community. I mean, obviously, work, and I know some of the work that you do when you're not here is in developing communities here, but maybe there's a strategy out there of, of minority-owned businesses that are looking to expand coming to this region. So I do think it's worthy of, of a, of a conversation.
And that's what I like to see with the support that the City of Peoria provides, the GPEDC, and with closing in on 30% of the City of Peoria being minority and at least 28% of that African-American, I think there needs to be some type of strategy developed from the GPEDC to, to attract and assist minority businesses to come here.
I'd also say that the opportunity zone strategy that we're putting together as a collective strategy amongst the, is really, I think, going to benefit most, some of the more impoverished parts of our community. That's the definition of behind the opportunity zone. So when I called you the other day, I said I wanted to meet with you, one of the things I want to talk about is how do we work in some of the, in some of the more difficult census tracts that were identified as opportunity zones? How do we develop opportunities for investment there? And I think that's one of the, one of the areas that, that our organization can work with.
But just remember, we've got a lot of African-American businesses that are not impoverished. They are architects, they are engineers, and, and IT. And so I appreciate the, the emphasis on impoverished communities, but we've got a lot of businesses out there on the other end of the spectrum. And lastly, and this is something that you may not be able to address right now, this is also a holdover from your predecessor, I'd like to find out if the GPEDC board has gotten any better with attracting any African-Americans to their board, and you may need to look into that a little more.
I'm sure we've made a lot of progress there. I will tell you that we, we've had this conversation in our board meeting. Here, here is the, the base problem. It's, it's, it's not an excuse, but it's, it's one of the reasons, is that we are a 501(c)(6), so we are a membership organization. So you have to be an investor, you know, you have to, and, and so the, the companies that have been investors, they get to pick who their board members are. And so, so that is one of the, one of the issues. What we have tried to do, and so, but we have discussed what, what efforts we could do to diversify our own board, both in terms of minorities and female representation and others. We do have what we call the SEDS Strategy Committee. And we have, and the SEDS Strategy Committee is kind of the, is the organization or is the, is the group that's, that oversees that, the implementation of, of the, the SEDS work that's being done. That's an area where we have some discretion, and that's an area where I would love, because that's really the work of the organization, right, is, is to, to see that, that the elements within the SEDS document are, are being addressed. And so that's an area where we have tried to diversify, not just with, with, you know, on, on, on racial lines, but also geographically. So having to pull in some folks from Mason Logan County where we didn't have a lot of representation. So what I can say to you is that it's our, it's our goal to get better. We have some structural issues that make it more difficult, but there's nothing that we, that we can't keep working towards.
I appreciate that because when contractors come before us and public work sits there, my question is always, what is the minority participation in those projects? Because we're giving them money and recognizing the 501(c)(6) status, I'm sure that it's not something that should hinder the GPEDC from receiving funding from the City of Peoria. So I would really like to see some intentional strategy to bring more minorities into the process of determining the direction of GPEDC. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome back, Chris. It's good to see you. And I appreciate your enthusiastic comments about the city. I, like you, am not from here originally and moved here 24 years ago, and I love this city. It's a great place to raise a family, and there's lots, lots of things to love about Peoria, and that's why I'm still here and why I sit on this council. So thank you for that. I have a few questions about the labor and employment slide, and I appreciate your comments on the, the statistics about the labor force and how that's a more important number, and glad to see that's increased by 921. Just curious, since we don't have comparable data from previous years, if that's been a continued growth? Is it comparable to how we've grown in the last few years? Is it less? Is it better?
So that, that's a great question. It's much better than it was in, so if I were to, and I don't know if I have City of Peoria data that goes back this far, I have regional MSA data that, that shows that we were in a trough, really, the, the absolute low point in, in terms of labor force in, I think it was 2015 or 2016, and we've, we've made it back up. But if you look historically, 10 years back, we're, we're much less than what, than what we were. And, and that's a combination of things. We have an aging, you know, so in Illinois, in the country, we've seen a, a reduction in what's called that labor force participation rate. It's a little higher in Illinois than it is in other states. So what we had in, for example, in 2015, we had a lot of Caterpillar people, people retire from Caterpillar. They stayed in our community, a lot of them did, but they're no longer working. So they, they're not in the workforce, they're not in the labor force anymore, but they're still here. So yeah, if we were to look back 10 years, you know, it would, it would look much different. I think the, in the region, we're up around 180,000 is the labor force, and I think at our high, we were probably around, well, at least 10 years ago, I don't know what it was in the 70s, I don't know if BLS has that information, we're up over 200,000. So there's, there's a lot of work yet to be done. So this isn't, not, we're not claiming victory here, we're claiming progress.
So wait, I think you said a couple of years ago it was a lot less? Do you have a ballpark?
I could get you it for, for the, for the region, but I don't know if I, I, I could have, I could go back and try to pull the City of Peoria, I'd just have to look for it. It's not a data set I put together, but it's something I could look at.
If you would, that would be great. I think that's important information for us to have. Additionally, I have a question, just wondering if the council is going to look into or has any plans to work to help develop a Green Corps in this new economic sector that we hopefully will have if we reach a resolution for the CSO? And sort of, you know, that's the direction the city's been moving. Just wondering if there's plans in the works to help develop that business?
I do know that the GPEDC has been involved with, with the Peoria Corps that, and, and has helped, Brent Baker in my office has helped to identify students from Peoria Public Schools and other folks, and, and helped them some of the training. We'd be happy to be involved in, in however, however the council would like to see us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, thank you for being here. As everybody's already said, it's, you always have so many positive things to say, and, and I certainly appreciate that. And really enjoyed hearing from my colleagues and, and their thoughts about, I guess, economic development here for our community. There's a couple of things that I'd like to see for Peoria, so I'm talking on behalf of Peoria anyway. What I'd like to see is for you and our, our team rifle-shoot to some top researchers at top universities who've been doing research for years on something and, and are ready to launch a business, a startup, where they're going to be developing some intellectual property, and of course, we have some kind of strings attached so that they do it probably in the best place in, I think, the world, right here in Peoria. And I, and I'm sure I can, we can have that discussion here with the rest of my colleagues on, you know, what is it that Peoria can do to help, help with that in some form of a grant? But I, I think the real key for, if we're talking about, I guess, innovation, is looking at the top universities where this, the research is going on. I'm sure we can find those, those researchers who are looking to jump out and get started and, and attract them here to Peoria. One of the other things is what, you know, information too, could be very helpful to some of our, our businesses here, like I think you probably have a lot more resources for doing research. But for example, what are some of the new industries that are, that have large growth that could, you know, maybe some of the businesses here could serve them as well, or jump in with some of the products that they're serving today into these newer industries? I certainly would like to tell you about some of the ones that we've been working on here. My son, who's been working with us for the last year, who is our marketing manager, Alex, he wouldn't be very happy if I, I told you some of the industries we've been looking at and getting very favorable responses back. So I would encourage some research into some new industries that could, could best fit into our area. Also, I, I think one of the other items, and maybe this is a little bit outside liberty here to find out what we could do with Bradley, for example, on other PhD programs and, and helping them get started with, with that. I know they're very costly to, to get up and running. But as I visit a lot of other universities that do have these PhD programs, there's a lot of research projects going on there. From that, students get experience or people in the community are, are working with the researchers and, and there's business and economic development going on with that. So those are just a few things that I, I noticed and thought I'd give you that insight. As well, I'd like to meet with you one-on-one, just to discuss, I spent probably about six months in a program over at 1871 in Chicago and got a chance to work with a lot of different people and kind of see their ecosystem and how that was built out, and it's, it's actually kind of mind-blowing just to see how that all works together, and certainly would like to share some of those insights with you.
Sure, I'd be happy to meet with you. The, the one thing I'll say is that one of the things that is one of the goals for us when it comes to innovation and entrepreneurship in this coming year is to build a relationship with Bradley University and their students that are there. I think Professor Bill McDowell made a presentation here a couple of, a couple of meetings ago, and Professor McDowell and I have become good friends, and, and one of the things that we talked about was how can the EDC get involved with students when they're in their junior and their senior year? It's his job to teach them how to build businesses. But it doesn't do me any good or us any good if they go and take that business and they build it in Chicago or San Jose or wherever they might be from. So we want to try to build those relationships with, with students at, at an early, you know, before they graduate to kind of sink some roots here in, in the region. So I think even our own university here in Bradley can be a source of that.
Well, I'm seeing no more lights, Mr. Setti, so some things don't change. When Mr. Setti was working for the city and was going to give a presentation, we were usually expecting 10 minutes, and an hour later, it was over. So that, we still had that bit, but...
My presentation.
But I, I'm very encouraged by the, the conversation from the council, between the council and what Mr. Setti's doing. I know that one of the things that we had a little bit of discussion on during the budget was the value that the city receives for working with GPEDC. And it was a good question, and it merited the discussion it received, but I, from sitting on the board and, and being involved with those meetings, there's a lot of really good work being done down there at GPEDC, and Mr. Setti is a, a great new leader for that organization. There's no way that we could leverage, I don't think, leverage the money that we're investing any better than we are to have the breadth that we get through that organization. And so I would invite all my peers up here to, as Councilman Montalongo said, take time and meet one-on-one and, and find out what's going on and how we can continue to help each other, because we're going to have to. Until we get to a point where the state is, you know, giving us a little bit more help in these things, we really are going to have to work as a, as a community much harder in this regard. But we appreciate your presentation. I'm not seeing any more lights, so we would have a motion to receive and file by Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Grab. And with that, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously.